Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. We have a roll call?
Chairman, this meeting has been advertised in the accordance of the Sunshine Act.
Oh, thank.
Roll call, Mr. Candell, Ms. Larmen, Mr. Muller, Mr. Shaw, Ms. Sataka, Mr. Velosin, Mr. Williams, Councilman Zabrowski, Chairman Tai.
Here.
We have a quorum.
There's been a, oh, we have a roll call, moralization of resolutions.
Done this evening?
Have a, have the red, uh, we need to pass the minutes from the last minute meeting?
Yep, there's done this evening.
Okay, communication agenda?
Nope, nope.
All right, site plan subdivision?
We have one currently, application number twenty-four dash oh-five, Prestige Plumbing and Heating, preliminary, final major site plan, twenty-sixty Highway thirty-five South Amboy, block five twenty-two, lot eight oh-one.
Mr. Hemel, you're up.
Mr. Chairman, nice to see you.
Had to be seen better than being viewed.
What's that I hear? Good evening, Mr. Chairman, number four, David Hemel is for the applicant, Prestige Plumbing Heating, and, Mr. Chairman, I just have a brief overview, and then we can proceed with our presentation. That's okay?
That's perfect.
Thank you so much. As indicated, so this is an application on behalf of Prestige Plumbing and Heating. As you know, we applied to your board for preliminary final site plan, and both variants approval. And for the record, the property is identified as block four two-two, lot eight oh-one, for Sierraville, and the address is two oh six oh three-five. The applicant, as you'll hear from our witnesses, proposes to renovate and partially demolish the existing building on the property, and to construct a two-story structure consisting of about three thousand, thirty-eight ninety-eight square feet, with a walkout basement. In addition, we're going to show a rear gravel storage yard and a small scale basement in the rear of the property. The applicant, Mr. Chairman, intends on relocating his business here in Sierraville. We'll hear all about that, so that's sort of an exciting element of this whole, whole project. For the record, the property is located in the B-three highway business zone. The proposed two-story office building is permitted, of course, within the zone, and outdoor storage is permitted as an accessory use in the B-three zone. The applicant has a variety of bulk variances, which our engineer will review. And we have three witnesses this evening, Mr. Robert Bruno, who's the owner of our present applicant, Mark Lieber, who's our professional engineer planner, and Lawrence Candarino, who's our architect. We have received professional review memos, and we'll go through all those and hopefully address them in our testimony. But obviously, your work professionals are here, that they could make sure we cover all those bases.
Sure they want.
Further at this point, so we can follow up as witness if that works for you.
That's fine.
Okay.
Not being picked up?
No, I can hear it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening, thank you for it.
You raise your right hand?
Yep.
You solemnly swear from the testimony you're going to give tonight, truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Robert Bruno, six Bellevue Road, Homedale, New Jersey, zero seven seven three three.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno.
Mr. Bruno, welcome. Just some preliminary questions for you to educate the board. So you are the current owner of Prestige Plumbing, is that correct?
Correct.
And you've been in business for how long?
Prestige has been incorporated since two thousand and two.
Fair enough. And what type of business does Prestige cover, and what type of projects do you generally handle?
We're a domestic plumbing company, but we do larger infrastructure-type projects, consisting of about eighty percent, eighty to eighty-five percent of our work. We do, um, we do commercial, commercial and industrial service, mostly hospitals. Our clients consist of Brooklyn Hospital, New York City Public Libraries, New York City Office of Medical Examiners, New York City Parks Department. That's the majority of what we do.
Great. And your intention should the board approve this application, and you move forward, and you build out this project, to relocate, relocate your business here into Sierraville, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, very good. So just describe, if you would, just generally, I've gone over what you're looking to do in terms of the renovation, but if you could just go over that briefly, what, what you're looking to do in terms of the building renovation?
So what I would like to do, what my dream would be, is to demolish the existing structure that's there and build off the existing foundation, do an alteration, make it a little bigger, a little wider, and go up two stories with it. And that would be headquarters for Prestige Plumbing.
Fair enough, okay. Now, uh, the board's professionals asked us to go through sort of operational issues and questions about the business. So can you just go over generally what your hours of oper- Sorry.
What's the most?
Hope not. What your hours of operation are, and the number of employees that you're going to have in the, at the property, et cetera, and also, uh, you know, how you will operate at, at the site generally?
So we, we start at about five-thirty in the morning, every morning, and we end about twelve hours later, five-thirty, six o'clock at night. We are truly twenty-four hours, seven day a week service business for our clients, but the majority of the men have trucks that they take home, so they're dispatched from their homes at night. We have six full-time employees in the office, consists of two admin girls, a bookkeeper, an engineer, and then I have two project, project managers that are in and out of the office, sometimes two, three times a week, sometimes not at all, and myself.
Great. One of the other questions that the board professionals had, had to do with the equipment and the material storage area. So generally, if you could describe what types and how many, many vehicles will be parked approximately in that rear storage area that we're proposing, and also the type of materials that will be stored and how it's accessed?
So the rear storage area will consist of about ten service fans. We have mini excavators, up to three, CAT three fifteen excavators. We use small Ford F-five fifty dump trucks. That's pretty much it, as far as equipment. We, we, oh, and two Bobcats. So there's about six, six pieces of equipment, two dump trucks, and it's, oh, I do have two Vacta trucks as well. I have, uh-
And they're, and they're obviously moved accordingly, based on your project demand, correct?
Based on the workload, yep.
Correct. Now, what about the materials in the back? I understand that you're going to be storing there. I understand they're obviously related to your project work, so can you just go over what they generally will be? What kind of materials? And I understand there, that's new materials coming in, right, that are stored there?
Yeah, we don't store a ton of material, but what we do keep is for emergency purposes, so you'd have a variance of a very, four to six, eight, up to twelve-inch ductile iron pipe for water main breaks. Same thing with cast iron, extra heavy cast iron pipe for sewer, sewer breaks, and various plumbing types and fittings.
Great. How about deliveries? How are, how often do they have come to the property, and how are they handled, and how frequently do you, would you get deliveries?
Deliveries to the shop are maybe three times a week. Most of the material goes directly to the job, unless we have to coordinate where we can't deliver it directly to a job site, so, but it's about three times a week.
And the vehicles that are delivering would be like small trucks or?
They're about usually box trucks, you know, some of our suppliers include Ferguson, General Plumbing Supply, you know, but it's box truck or a rack truck, but medium-bodied trucks.
Okay, very good. Mr. Bruno, was anything else you'd like to cover with regards to anything we've gone over? Anything you'd like to add for the board to be aware about your company, the application, or you think you've covered it all?
Well, I've just, I've been, I've, I started in the industry at seventeen years old. I'm fifty-eight, we've been doing it a long time. I brought some project profiles, if anybody would like to review them, gives you an idea of what we do and who we do it for. But other than that, if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody have any questions? We're good? I think you explained it well enough.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno. Mr. Chairman, our next witness will be our professional engineer and planner, Mr. Mark Lieber, who I believe has some handouts also, and we can have these marked, I guess, as, well, I guess there's several, so we can mark them as needed, but I guess we'll start with A-one, and Mr. Lieber can identify what-
Do you want, do you want to mark them as a set, or do you want to mark them as a?
We can mark them as a set. That's probably easier. Yeah, can I have a bet that you have a? Thank you so much, yeah, okay.
Keeping you in the dark?
What's that, yeah? What else is there?
So, Mr. Helman, what we'll do is that we're going to mark as A-one-
Set, correct?
Today's date, which is a set of, you know, three pages, total of six photographs.
Terrific. Okay, uh, I guess the first thing we'd have to have, Mr. Lieber's, more than qualified.
Raise your right hand, solemnly swear from testimony you give tonight, truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, actually spell your last name, and provide your address.
It's Mark with a C. My last name is Lieber, L-E-B-E-R, and I'm at East Point Engineering. It's eleven South Main Street in Marlborough.
Thank you, silly. Would you briefly give a description of your CV and qualifications, so we can get you qualified as an expert in planning and engineering?
Thank you, hi, good evening. Bachelor's Science degree in civil engineering from Drexel University. Following graduation, I completed the part-time MBA program at Rutgers Graduate School and was licensed in two thousand and three as a professional engineer. In two thousand and five, I passed the New Jersey Planning Exam, and in two thousand and six, you okay? Two thousand and six, I completed the Certified Municipal Engineering Certificate Program. Since that time, I've testified before numerous boards, including this board, as well as your planning board, the county, and I've been certified as a expert in municipal court and Superior Court.
Take a motion to accept his credentials. No move? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
You're up.
Mark, before we begin, I know you have exhibits that you provided, but also, I believe you, just for the record, I want to clarify before you testify, that the site plan you're going to refer to, last revised, May sixteenth, twenty-four, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, would you just, if you would, introduce the project? Discuss the relief that we're seeking, and also address the variances, and we can go through, obviously, the professional review memos as well. Did you, you don't have, you don't have a, a physical board that you want to utilize for your site plan, correct?
No, I don't, I don't have a board, I, you know, I assume everybody has a copy of the plan.
So, Mr. Chairman, we're going to refer to that site plan as we testify. I presume everyone has that?
Yes.
Okay, great, okay. So with that, Mr. Lieber, I will turn over the introduction and your testimony accordingly.
Alrighty, so just a little bit of background, this is block four twenty-two, lot eight point oh-one. Street address is twenty-sixty Route thirty-five. This is a twenty thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine square foot lot in the B-three, which is a highway business zone. It's a little unusual, the location, it's actually almost at the very edge of the borough, on the border with South Amboy. And our right side property line is a jug handle as part of Route thirty-five. Right now, there's a vacant building on the property. It's an A-frame structure, when you look at it from the highway, it looks like a one-story building. The property falls off quickly as you go toward the rear, so if you were to look at the back of the building, it would look similar to a walkout basement, so you, you know, you'll see the level below in the back, and then the upstairs is really the front of the building on Route thirty-five. I took these photos this morning, just to show you what the latest and greatest is at the property. So, uh, first photo, which is on the left here, that's the existing building. You'll see on the left wall of the building, it drops down to the rear. The next photo is looking across the front of the building, down the highway to our neighbor to the left. Go to the next page. This is actually looking down the driveway on the left side of the building. There's presently a roll-off dumpster there, and then in the back, I call that the backyard. Behind this property, there's like a utility use, where there's a tower and a substation. Go to the fourth photo. I stated earlier that the property is really alongside of one of the jug handles on the highway. So this is a picture from the jug handle, just so you can see the back of the building. Not the best condition, an rear yard, and then in the foreground, you'll see this kind of block retaining wall, which we're going to talk about in a little bit. Finally, on the last page, two views of the back of the property. As you can see, there's really nothing out there right now, it's, there was a point at which everything was cleaned up and cleared, but the vegetation has started to come back in, because there hasn't been any activity out there. You'll see that building in the distance, that's one of the neighbor's properties. And there's some trucks in the back, you'll see in the bottom photo, that's also on a neighbor's property. So what's proposed here is a reconstruction, renovation, to create a building that's really a two-story building facing the highway, which would look like a three-story building in the back. The footprint's thirteen eighty square feet. We do have a couple of variances, which I want to go through. The first two are non-conformities that are pertaining to the lot itself. The B-three zone requires a hundred-foot lot width. The existing lot width is eighty-eight point two feet. Really, what we're doing doesn't affect that, and there's really no other land available to make that comply. The other item is the minimum front yard setback. This building right now has a overhang on the front. We measure thirty-two point two feet to the front of that overhang. Fifty feet's required in the zone. We're going to remove that overhang and increase the front yard setback to forty feet. So it is a big improvement, but we're still shy of the minimum fifty feet. The next item is accessory use. The interpretation of the outdoor area in the back, which we want to use to store either some vehicles or some small equipment, is that that constitutes a accessory use. So the setback would be fifty feet from the front yard. Again, we're on that jug handle on the side of our property, and we only really have like an eleven-foot setback to the jug handle, so that's relief that we are requesting, as well as there's a ten-foot separation requirement between, I guess, this storage area in the rear and the actual structure itself, the principal building. The way my plan is drawn, I only have a two-foot setback. Really, that storage area comes up to the back of the building. There's also another requirement that a minimum of one-half of the required side yard setback is required for an accessory use, again, storage area being accessory. So half the required side yard setback would be five feet in this zone, and we have two feet again. So that's probably something we could bring into conformity, just by adding another three feet, but right now, that's listed as variance. And then the last item is about parking. This use is very limited. The client only needs maybe six parking spaces on a day-to-day basis. Most of his employees don't come to the office, which works well for this particular use. That's not to say that it would work for any possible permitted use in the zone, but for his business, we felt that ten parking spaces was adequate. Some of the parking spaces, two of them are like double-stacked, but this is not a private, I mean, this is not a public type of a use, where someone's driving down the highway and says, oh, I want to stop in a Prestige and check it out. It's really just limited to his operation and his employees. But I do want to note that the zoning calculation that the board's planner provides said that seventeen parking stalls are required. In that seventeen calculation, they're taking the entire outdoor storage area as having a parking requirement associated to it. So that actually would increase the number of parking spaces that we had calculated in our plan, which was somewhat lower. And either way, you know, if you wanted to go with the seventeen calculation, or our calculation, which I think was eleven, we had calculated here sixteen. We weren't including the outdoor storage area, and we still have ten. But either way, I think that the practicality of the use is that we can actually put a couple of stripe stalls in the back of this building if we have to, you know, if the board was more comfortable with that, which in fact would not even be seen from the street, but-
You're proposing ten in the front?
Yeah, but two of those ten are like double-parked, on the right.
Mr. Lieber, on the, with regards to, I guess, striping, two spaces at the rear, is that what we suggested?
Yeah, we could do two or three.
That could be for potentially employees, right?
It would be employees only.
So that would free up the additional spaces in the front to the extent we need it?
I mean, I don't know if anyone had a chance to look at the property, but it's a very difficult property to work with. I know what the prior use was there, as a moving company. He had put that ramp on the side of the building, which we're going to have to correct, because it seems it's probably too steep for, you know, his vehicles. So with the opportunity to decrease the slope of the ramp, we can put two or three spaces in the back, and then, you know, I'm more than comfortable that there's enough parking, again, for his use. You know, if someone came by later and said they want to open a restaurant here, that's a different story. But I think right now, knowing what his operation is and the number of employees, I think that the parking is enough. I wanted to go to Morgan's letter, which is dated February twenty-eighth. Most of the comments, I have no issues with, mostly technical comments, but there are just a few things I want to touch upon with regard to some of the waivers. For example, the way we had started this project on day one was we reached out to NJ DOT, because the right-of-way here is paved within this property. And there were vehicle parking spaces within that DOT right-of-way, so we wanted to talk to him to make sure that, hey, if we change the use of this property, are there going to be any permitting requirements whatsoever? And the gentleman who handled that, his name is Andrew Ferranda, he's a well-known traffic engineer in New Jersey, and he was able to obtain a letter of really no interest that says, hey, what you guys drew on your plan for a new parking layout does not require a new access permit. But if we start doing sidewalks along the front edge, creating parking islands and landscaping, then that changes the whole scenario, and then we would in fact need a new access permit. So we are requesting relief from providing the sidewalk in front of the property.
You know if there's any other sidewalks in that area?
No, I mean, if you look at that photo down the road, so on the first page, the second photo, there's just a lot of asphalt along these buildings along the highway. You know, it's an older style, some of them have wide depressed curb openings, and there's parking right against the buildings. But, you know, unfortunately, the more we play around with it, the more problematic we're going to have with the DOT. It's something we're trying to avoid. The next item is, um, there's no curbing in that actual parking area, while there is curbing on the highway. We don't have like a curved parking area like you would find at, you know, store, something like that. It's more or less an existing condition. And I think that when you look at the building and the architecture and what's proposed, and the upgrades that we're doing in the property, I think that not having curbing is not a fatal error here. And, you know, I think that the whole of the project is going to greatly improve the appearance of this corner, frankly, so. If we put in curbing, it really changes the whole parking lot, because the grades then all change. When you put in a six-inch curve, then everything has to be six inches higher all around, and it makes ADA compliance more difficult and would aggravate more or less our design. So, you know, my opinion is it's an existing condition, but we are improving the entire property as a whole, so. There's, um, the drive aisle width comment. Just want to point that out on the plan.
Number twelve, recidere.
Which sign?
What are you going to do for signage on the building?
We actually had submitted a letter to the board showing a building-matted sign on the front elevation, and that's the only signage that's proposed, there's no freestanding sign. So the twenty-foot, is that measured from the right-of-way line to our parking stall? Or is that measured all the way to the curb line?
Oh, I'd be happy to talk about parking, that's really my biggest concern for this application. So the ten-foot measurement is really from the parking space of the front property line. The concerns I have with parking on this application is that you have tandem parking spaces that are adjacent to the jug handle, and you have the two parking spaces that are sort of blocking the access drive to the rear. When I view this property, I think you really have six parking spaces, which would be starting where the number eight is on your plan, and then working towards the jug handle. My concern about having these tandem spaces, or spaces that may be blocking the access drive, is you don't have an access, a dedicated access to Route thirty-five. So vehicles are coming directly off of Route thirty-five and into the spots. So if there's a person who is handicapped who's coming to this facility, and there's a car parked in front of that handicap spot, there's no access for that person to get into that handicap parking spot. The same is true as if there's people parked on the northernmost two parking spaces and a delivery vehicle is coming. That car isn't, that vehicle has nowhere to go, and it's going to theoretically stop in Route thirty-five. I like the idea of what you recommended, where we can maybe move some of the parking spaces into the rear area, and then simplify the parking up front. I just, I just don't think with parking spaces accessed to and from Route thirty-five directly, that it's a safe configuration where vehicles are going to potentially stop within the, in the highway.
If we, to your suggestion, so if we take two of those spaces from the front, and put them in the rear, that way frees up that access aisle, is that what you're thinking?
And eliminate the tandem spaces with the handicaps, so.
Right.
Based on the, the applicant's testimony, he has six full-time employees, another couple people who stop in every now and then. So if you have six up front, you can put two employees in the back, that'll leave a handicap accessible spot open, and on the infrequency, where someone is coming to the property for some reason, pick up a check, you have that additional parking spot. I, I just, if, if you had a dedicated driveway off of Route thirty-five where a car could queue, you don't have that here, though.
You're right.
And then regarding Mr. Lieber's other comments about some of the waivers we're seeking for the lack of curbing or the lack of sidewalk, there is no sidewalk in the area. This would be the proverbial sidewalk to nowhere. As it relates to the curbing, the Route thirty-five is the high point of the property, and I do agree that introducing a curb would, in some respects, act as a dam, and it could impact the drainage for the area.
Mr. Lieber, do you have, so do you have any comments on the parking, recreation of the parking?
No, 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 I'm going to take the ADA spot, bring it forward, okay? And then I'll take the two spots on the left, put them in the back. One thing I do want to state, just, so it's on the record, is that when you come in off the highway, there's almost thirty feet of pavement before you get to a marked stall. So there is space for a car to sit there in the event that someone is backing out. I just, I didn't want it to sound like it wasn't safe, and frankly, it's a huge improvement over what the prior tenant was doing there. So, but I will definitely move the stalls, that's fine.
I just don't want someone trying to make a K-turn or some sort. I, and again, I think the testimony is really that you need about eight parking spaces per take.
Yeah.
I think you'll have six up front, two in the back, and, and I'm-
You don't have any problems coming up with new drawings with that?
Oh, no.
Okay.
Not at all. So that was, the other thing I want to talk about is that retaining wall that's showing up on the plan, that kind of crosses over into the DOT right-of-way. Believe it or not, there was a prior survey done on this property by a different land surveyor, not the survey that you guys have, that showed that that area was not DOT right-of-way, and frankly, the client is the one who constructed that wall. So when we got the new survey and showing that, no, that part of the property is in the DOT right-of-way, now the wall's in the right-of-way, so that wall has to come down. So it is not a state-owned wall, it's his wall that he put up, but it has to come down, and that'll be reflected on the plan.
What do you, how, how are you going to level that off if you take the wall down?
Well, we're going to have to build a different wall on his property.
Further, further back?
Correct.
Okay.
The other thing I wanted to mention is, there was a comment here about where non-residential use of butt and residential use of residences, residential use of law, you need a fifty-foot-wide landscape buffer provided. So right now, there's really no buffer area, this is more or less an existing non-conformity, and I believe that the issue is, if you look at the zoning map, so where are the B-three zone? Behind our lot is another B-three lot, and then beyond that's R-seven. And I've been out there before, there's a pretty nice wooded area between this lot and the R-seven zone. But due to the, really the size and the shape of this lot, we just can't provide a fifty-foot-wide buffer. What we did, what we did do is we provided a landscape plan. So we are proposing trees along the back of the property, where right now it just opens. You know, more or less aesthetic improvement, but to provide literally a fifty-foot buffer, we would be halfway up to the rear yard depth. And right now, there's nothing there, and the prior owner had nothing there either. So I wanted, that was item H in the- So I wanted, that was item H in the D, D-point H in the Morgan letter. And then I think those are all the items I wanted to point out. I mentioned we're gonna rebuild the side driveway to reduce the slope. I have no issues with the stormwater management comments, the utility comments. Lighting, I'm gonna change the photometrics to get the rear a little brighter to reach some of those dark corners. Uh, the tree report, it says we have to have five trees planted. If that means five more trees in addition to the twenty-nine, we would add five more trees. That's not a problem. Um, I just wanna see if I'm missing anything that needs to be specifically addressed. Um, we're gonna fix the paving in the front. There's a comment here on page eight about existing asphalt appears to encroach into the states right away to the south. That should be removed. We, we wanted to keep that just the way it was. Um, and frankly, that's what the DOT was looking at. Yeah, we're gonna repair all that asphalt. I, I mean, I don't think there was anything specific from a technical standpoint that I disagreed with or had any issue with.
And we'll, I assume we'll comply with the wall, require performance guarantees for the improvements?
Yeah, that's standard. I mean, the real meat of this project is really the building appearance. I mean, you drive by this property, it, it looks abandoned. So, you know, this all goes toward the planning criteria, which is, you know, what are the positives of this case? I think once you see the architectural plans, you're gonna say, well, gee, this is a huge improvement. I think for a practical manner, um, this is a perfect location, and the building's a perfect size for this property. And it's also perfect for his use. So while we normally focus on negatives, I can tell you right now that there frankly aren't any negatives here because we're getting rid of what I consider an eyesore. But in addition to that, this is not a major traffic generator. This use is not a nuisance. We're not dealing with wetlands, floodplains, streams, none of that. We're not clear-cutting woods. I mean, when I look at projects and I think of detriments, like, none of those things are even a part of what's proposed here. So, you know, I think that when you, when you look at the type of relief we're requesting, uh, I think it's the minimus. I really do. And um, you know, I'm excited for you to see the architectural plans. You know, you could compare it to what's in these photographs and understand, like, this is a very good change for the area.
Any questions?
Yeah.
You have any?
So since the retaining wall is going to be removed,
Yeah.
um, was the DOT made aware of that change that's going to occur?
I honestly don't think they even noticed the wall. Uh, they were looking at strictly access.
Sure. Um, so I would like something from the DOT, just acknowledging that you're gonna be working within their right-of-way.
That's fine.
Um, and if we're going to be removing the wall, I would like to see us remove the asphalt that's encroaching into the state right-of-way. Um, I, I don't really see a reason to leave that. Um, because again, it's encroaching into the state right-of-way. Um, if you're going to also remove the tandem spaces where the ADA space is currently uh situated, do we add some landscaping in that area? Um, right now, while the landscape is really in the back and really not visible from Route thirty-five, I think when you remove that tandem parking on that area, if you remove those improvements, you could do a decent amount of landscaping that would probably complement the building upgrades that you're doing.
That would be fine. I, one thing I did want to ask you, though, is with the asphalt in the right-of-way, the asphalt's in the right-of-way on the highway. So we're already in the right-of-way because you need to have asphalt there to get in and out. But the asphalt on the side, it's also in the right-of-way. It's like the same thing. I mean, I could certainly talk to Mr. Ferranda and get his opinion on that.
So if you have something from the DOT that says they take no exception to that asphalt remaining,
Okay.
I would take no issue.
Okay, all right. So let me make a note of that.
But again, I think, um, I think the changes you're making, I agree that the site needs a little bit of a base lift.
Yeah.
Um, and I think the additional landscaping we're talking about, I think, can really go a long way to helping them.
Okay, thank you.
And I just wanted to ask if you could provide some testimony on lighting and signage?
Yes. Uh, did you actually, did you get that letter I sent you for the signage?
I'm, yes, thank you for sending that, actually, but yeah.
So we, we had in response, during like the completeness review, and I know that there was um, sometime has elapsed since then, there was a question about signage. We had sent out a, a color, a letter rendering of the front of the building with the proposed sign on the building to comply with the size that's permitted in the zone. Um, we're not asking for any relief for signage. We don't have any freestanding signage, uh, just the one-wall sign. Uh, and frankly.
On that or just lights on the building?
Uh, you have lights on the sign? Did you want to sign it with it up?
Actually, the signage is a very, you know, it's a hot topic for me.
So you're just gonna have the signage on the building. You're not gonna put any lights on it? Anybody that's coming to your building knows where it's at? Okay.
Okay, and then your, uh, your other question was um, lighting, yes. In the back of the property, there's an area that's got two pole-mounted lights, new fixtures. And I could change the photometrics of that to throw the light further out so that I can get the dark corners lit up and whatnot. Uh, the one pole I put so that the back of the pole is facing the residential zone so that they wouldn't see anything. Um, and I have no issue revising that to, you know, make the rear of the property well-lit this way, uh, you know, later in the year when it's dark early, whatever, there'll be plenty of, you know, we could even turn the lights off at night if you want. Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for the letter and the, uh, and the comments. Um, I mean, this, this looks fine to me. I think it's in character with the, the building type, and it complies with the ordinance.
Do board members have any questions? If not, your next witness.
Okay, thank you. Nope.
Uh, Lawrence. Uh, Mr. Chairman, our next witness is Lawrence Mandarino. He's our architect. Uh, he never happened this morning, qualified. He does have some exhibits, also handouts, rather.
Handouts?
And, uh, and the board as well. But I guess before we get this morning, we could just give it to I guess we can mark this A.
We'll mark that A, too.
All right.
Just, it's just one set.
One set, yes. One set.
Okay, and as we're passing around, raise your right hand. You solemnly swear from the testimony you give tonight, truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Please state your names, spell your last name, and provide the address of your business.
Lawrence Mandarino, M-A-N-D-A-R-I-N-O. Nine Morning Star Court, Freehold, New Jersey, zero seven seven two eight.
Thank you.
Mr. Mandarino, good evening. Uh, if you could just give a brief background of your CV and your professional qualifications, so we can have you qualify as an expert in the field of architecture.
Yes, I'm a graduate of Pratt Institute. I've been licensed since nineteen ninety-one. Uh, New York, New Jersey, and Pennsylvania.
Okay, and you've obviously prepared architectural plans your whole career. You're familiar with this process.
Correct, yes.
As the chairman, we would all recommend that expert, according to.
Take a motion to accept this credentials?
Make motion.
We'll have a second?
Second.
All in favor? No opposed? The ayes have it? Are they all on the package?
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
Counsel, as, as your witness goes through the architectural plans A two, if you can just refer to the specific sheet.
Well, good. Okay, uh, if you would, uh, walk us through the proposed architectural design, and obviously we can defer to your your exhibit and your plans and you provided to the board, and I guess uh, the board's attorney, if you're gonna discuss anything specific relative to the what's remarked as A two, if you could refer to the sheet number, and uh, also, so I guess you're gonna briefly describe, you know, the layout, the floor plan.
Sure.
The facade, the materials we're gonna be using, and just the architectural elements of the building, and uh, the floor is yours.
So this building was designed specifically for prestige business. We have um on sheet eight zero zero four, the cellar floor plan, which is used primarily for storage and some uh, small office space, clerical area with access to the yard. On sheet, on sheet A zero zero five, you'll, you'll see the first floor plan with handicap access and uh, offices to the left and right with a small, uh, small kitchen space. Takes you out to a balcony to the backyard. Sheet A zero zero six is the proposed first floor, uh, second floor with conference rooms and office space. Sheet A zero zero seven depicts the elevations as proposed. We have the front elevation and the right-side elevation. The front of the building will be brick veneer. The sides will, uh, sides and rear will be stucco finish. Sheet A zero zero eight shows the rear elevation and the right-side elevation. In the back, you'll see it's a three-story building with access to his office space. Second sto-, uh, first-story balcony, all stucco facade.
And the uh, the uh, and you said the front of the building will be brick veneer. Is that correct?
Yes, it's a brick veneer.
Okay. Uh, is there anything else you'd like to add about your plans or raise anything else to the board's attention?
Not that it's, you know.
Okay.
No, not really.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, that, that's the presentation of the architectural plans, including the facade treatment, the floor layout, et cetera. So if you were the board, your professionals have any questions?
Anybody have any questions of the architect? Professionals?
Where will the mechanical be located?
It's in the basement. Uh, actually, the cellar plan, you'll see the utility closet adjacent to the lavatory.
What about the AC?
That's sheet A zero zero four.
What about the AC unit?
Um, the AC unit would probably be within the same utility room, be one unit. And then there would be air handler on the roof.
Okay.
Is that gonna be visible? Are you gonna put a per- perm?
I haven't put much thought as to visibility of the unit, but we could place it towards the back.
That would be preferred.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions? Dan, you're good?
Back to Chairman, Mr. Chairman. Um, you can sit down for a moment.
Thank you.
Uh, I have one question of the owner. We're gonna do your estimating in this building?
Yeah.
Okay. That's the two project managers, or you have es-
I do a lot of the, I, I have an engineer. I have one engineer that, that I work with.
All right, so you, you're doing the estimate? You, you put, you put the eyes on it? Okay, thank you.
I thought the same thing.
Forty years in the business.
Yeah. I know that. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you or any of the board members have any questions or?
I can ask. Anybody else have any questions before he sums up?
We want to open to the public.
Uh, we'll do that. Make a motion to open to the public? Got a motion? Second? All in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have it? Anybody like to speak in behalf of this application? Anybody like to speak in on this application, going once, going twice? Anybody like to speak on this application? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to close the public. Second? All in favor? Say aye, aye. The ayes have it. It's all yours.
Thank you again. Uh, first, I want to thank the board and your professionals, your professional planner and engineer. Uh, we thank them for their extensive review of this and their very good comments, and we think that we've satisfactorily addressed them. And I think both your planner and engineer had, uh, excellent thoughts, how to always improve the site layout relating to parking and all the other issues. Uh, as you heard from our engineer, Mr. Lieber, I think generally uh, we're in agreement with all the com-, you know, technical comments. We think this proposed uh, project, including obviously the renovation of this, of this building, i- is certainly a positive. Uh, both in terms of uh, aesthetics and also to, as Mr. Lieber said, this building really is an eyesore. And we're, have the opportunity, subject to the board's approval, to bring prestige to, to the bureau, to operate its, its business. And the good thing is that it'll be um, a low-key operation. It'll be prim-, it'll be for his business and his employees only. So we think the site works for their purpose. Uh, we think we've gone over the, the variances that are either pre-existing, most of those. Uh, so I would respectfully request that the board act favorably upon this application, and we look forward to your deliberation. Thank you.
Thank you. What's your pleasure, board?
Chairman, I make a motion to, uh, accept this, uh, application contingent upon the um comments from our planner and the comments from the um, um, uh, the the, uh, report.
Give a second? We'll call Mr. Candell?
Yeah.
Ms. Lorman?
Yes.
Mr. Velosin?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Tai?
Yes.
Thank you.
Welcome to Saravon.
Mr. Chairman, thank you and the members of the board and your-
Thank you very much for a nice presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Always a pleasure seeing you.
Like I said, it's better being seen. Oh, yeah?
Mr. Chairman, next on the agenda is the area in need of redevelopment study, JCPN L site, block one seventy-four, lot one point oh one, formerly block one seventy-four, lot one. Block one seventy-four, lot one point oh two. Block, um, excuse me, block one seventy-six, lot two point oh six. Uh, Ms. Venus want from VMS Planning LLC.
Good evening.
Good evening, board members.
How are you?
Good.
What you got for us?
So, uh, I'm here on behalf of Saravon Economic and Redevelopment Agency to present two studies. Uh, both these studies were, um, study areas were recommended by the council, so I could put my qualifications on record. I've testified before, though.
Okay, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna first swear in. Salmo swear from the testimony you're gonna give tonight, truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Okay, please state your name, spell your last name, and provide the address of your business.
Sure. Uh, Vina Sawant, S-A-W-A-N-T. VMS Planning, five seventy West Gate Drive, Edison, New Jersey. I am a licensed, uh, professional planner in the state of New Jersey, certified nationally by the American Institute of Certified Planners. Uh, I hold a bachelor's degree in architecture from uh, Bombay University, India, and a dual masters in urban planning and policymaking from NYU. I currently serve as the planning director for Old Bridge Township. I'm also the redevelopment planner for, uh, Saravon Economic Redevelopment Agency.
Make a motion that we accept their credentials.
And I have testified before multiple boards.
A motion. Give a second?
Got a second? Second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No opposed? You're up.
Thank you.
Which one are we doing first? The powerhouse or the former powerhouse? Okay.
That, I think the slides are not adjusted. Maybe you have to shrink.
Good?
I'll, I'll change it.
Sure. So the first study area is the JCPNL site, which was a coal power plant. The study area comprises of two lots under the statutory power.
I'm sorry, can I just interrupt you for one second?
Sure.
I, I think that because this is a presentation, part of the plan for purposes of area need study, why don't we, as we go through these, why don't we mark your area need of redevelopment study? The purposes of, of this application, because you're going to be referring to it throughout this presentation.
Sure, yes.
So, so why don't we mark the JCPNL coal power plant area need of redevelopment study? Let's just mark it as P1.
Okay.
Okay? Yes. So Vena, as you're going through it, we mark this as P1, which consists of the area need of redevelopment study, which consists of approximately six pages.
Yes.
Correct?
That is the PowerPoint, not the study.
I'm sorry?
The six page is the-
So the P1 is the PowerPoint.
Correct. And the study was distributed and on record for the planning board and the public to review.
So if you're just referring to the PowerPoint tonight, we're just going to refer that as P1.
Correct.
Thank you for the part.
No problem. Yes, I was, I was a little confused when you called me with questions because I'm like the, the information you were asking.
Add a different document.
Ah, okay. All right. So under the statutory powers instituted by the state of New Jersey and the Servile Borough Council, a resolution was adopted January 6, 2025, to investigate whether these two parcels that are formerly JCPNL coal, coal power point, power plant qualifies as an area in need of redevelopment. And based on the local redevelopment and housing law, I have conducted a study, the report was circulated to the board members, and the noticing has been appropriately done. It was available for the public to review as well. It contains two parcels, block 174, lot 1.01, which is roughly 14.5 acres and is also known as 99 River Road. The property is owned by Servile Power LLC. The second lot is block 174, lot 1.02. This lot is roughly 72 acres and is, is owned by Trogen Development LLC. The study area is located northwest, the northwest region of Servile. The study area comprises actually of two zones. Lot 1.01 lies fully within the industrial zone, whereas lot 1.02 is a split zone lot, which is covered by the industrial zone as, as well as the marine waterfront zone. To give you a little history, the power point plant was built in the early 1950s. There was an attempt to change this in 1991 to natural gas, but eventually in the early 2000s, it slowly started decommissioning and was eventually abandoned. The property has been weakened or underutilized for the last 20, 25 years. So I went through the analysis to, I actually went through all the departments, the building department, the police, the fire, to see if there were, that there was any information that was striking and which would help me qualify. Again, it's an abandoned site. There have been incidents in the past which the police have noted that has been suspicious activities trespassing. There has been some tax delinquency because the two parcels are owned by different owners. I was in touch with CME to get an update on the roadway conditions because there is no direct access to the site. The access to the site is through a driveway which trespasses through a borough-owned parcel, and the width of the driveway is quite narrow. So there needs to be significant improvements in terms of the roadway. There is water and sewer connection to the area. There were maps attached, which were provided by the utility authority, which were included as part of this report. The report also contains property evaluations, which shows whether there were any improvements done in the past few years. The records show and the tax assessor has certified that not, not many improvements were done to the site, so the improvement ratio is significantly low. Now, with, when it comes to the master plan consistency, the land use element of the master plan that was drafted last year has some recommendations made for the industrial zone as well as the marine waterfront. It allows you to spur economic growth in that area. It also talks about the industrial zone being high on impervious coverage or the FAR needs to be looked at. So I think this is a great opportunity. I also know that this area actually directly abuts the River Road redevelopment area. I know at the agency level, there have been discussions on redeveloping some of the parcels on River Road. The latest recommendation was for a tiki bar. There were discussions about a recreational center. I think this area is ripe for development, and so going through the redevelopment will, redevelopment route will only encourage economic growth in this area. The study is consistent with the master plan recommendations. There were recommendations added last year. In fact, when I was reviewing it on behalf of the agency, the agency had added some recommendations so that it provides us the impetus to go and conduct many more studies in different areas of the town. The area is within the smart growth planning area. This area is also in the metropolitan planning area where redevelopment is highly encouraged by the state. Now, there are eight criterias that are established by the local redevelopment housing law, and each one of them, like for example, criteria A talks about buildings that are unsafe or in dilapidated conditions. Criteria B talks about discontinuance of industrial buildings. Criteria C relates to weakened land. Criteria D relates to dilatrous land uses or, or properties that have significant impervious coverage, excessive parking, lacking of landscaping, or any security measures. Criteria E, where there are number of owners and it makes the development of the property impossible. Criteria F, which relates to properties that are in excess of five contiguous acres and that have been in distress because of natural calamities. Criteria G, which relates to the urban enterprise zone. Criteria H, which is the smart growth area. And then section three is another criteria that allows you to include a parcel that doesn't meet any of the above criteria, but which is critical for the sound planning of that area. So in reviewing the sites, two sites, based on these criteria, I believe that they meet more than one criteria. So first, I will talk about block 174, lot 1.01. This is the parcel that is roughly 14.5 acres, and it contains the accessory structures that supported the coal power point, power plant at one time. This lot is fully within the industrial zone. It has significant impervious coverage. The parking lot is in severe distress and is in poor condition. There are outstanding taxes on it for this year, and so it qualifies criteria D and H. And also, it qualifies section three because the development of the power plant site, which is to the rear of this parcel, is next to impossible without including this parcel because that parcel is accessed through this site. So it meets three criterias of the local redevelopment and housing law. Site two, 174, lot 1.02, is where the abandoned power point, power plant building is, and it meets criteria B for discontinuance of the industrial use or the power plant use. Criteria D with obsolete layout, dilatrous land uses, excessive impervious coverage. Criteria H because it is within the smart growth planning area. And then section three because it, to come up with a cohesive plan for this area, it is important to include this one parcel. The adjacent parcels are already in an existing redevelopment area. So that concludes my presentation for the JCPNL site. I will take any questions?
I have a question. The jet plants that are on the property, are they still in use?
No, they're not being used.
The jet, jet units on, the peaker units? In block 174.101?
I don't believe so because I was told that the site is completely abandoned.
I'm not quite sure about that. I haven't been down there in a while, but I know that they, the peaker units were working a number of years after the power plant itself stopped operation.
I, I know that I had a meeting with the owners some, a year ago, and what was told to me is they are not using the site, so I'm not 100% sure.
All right, if you could check on that for me?
Sure.
I mean, because that would alter everything that you're doing, and I'm not quite sure one way or the other that they aren't.
I think this is-
There are the five, the five jet, you know, the units that I'm talking about?
Yes, yes, I know. And I think this is just the first step. This is just-
I understand.
Right. So I believe, what would happen is when we, if, if the council designates this area as an area in need of redevelopment, the next step would be to write a redevelopment plan, and at that time, we could evaluate the uses that are in there or the uses that can potentially go there. I know Sarah is looking at all the properties surrounding it to make it like an destination place as well. So there is a lot of opportunity to review and retain what can be retained or introduce more uses in that area.
You said our recommendation.
Yes.
So just for the board, all we're doing is making a recommendation that this, this is a study, and we're going to send it back to the, the council to act on. And then the questions that I asked will be answered in the full study.
Yes.
Okay.
We could take a motion to-
Well, let's, let's see if anybody has any questions first. Anybody have any questions of the, Sarah lawyer?
Do we want to open to the public first?
Yeah.
You should open up to the public for any questions first of Ms. Sawant and then for comments.
Anybody from, first of all, will make a motion to open to the public? Second?
Can I tell you about the jet program online?
Would I get a second for the open?
Wait, wait, sir, hold on a second. Okay, please?
Every, everybody in agreement and nobody's, all right, we're good. Sir, you want to come up and speak?
No.
Oh, and, well, come on up and tell us what you wanted.
I'm waiting until the end of here, that's all.
Okay.
Didn't even interrupt, I'm sorry.
Well, that's okay. We've had worse. Anybody have a questions on this? If not, we'll take a motion to send it back to the, oh, 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 call, I'm sorry. Anybody, anybody make a motion to close the one? We got a second. All in favor? All right.
So, so what you're voting on is whether you're going to make a recommendation to the council that these properties, block 174, lots 1.01 and 1.02, qualify as an area in need of redevelopment?
That's correct. I have a motion on that? Motion made in second. Anybody opposed? Hearing none?
Roll call. Mm-hmm. Mr. Kandel?
Yeah.
Ms. Larmen? Mr. Velosen? Mr. Williams? Chairman Tai?
Yes.
Great.
All right. Now the easy one.
Do I have to put my?
Yeah, so why, so why don't we do this? Because it's a separate redevelopment area and separate redevelopment study. Let's reel it back. Why don't we get you sworn?
Sure.
You saw, I'm going to swear from the testimony, you're going to have tonight's truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
State your name for the record and that.
Vena Sawant, S.A.W.A.N.T., VMS Planning, 570 West Gate Drive, Edison, New Jersey. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, I'm certified nationally by the American-
It's okay.
Well, accept your credentials from before.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to put on the record, this redevelopment studies for Journey Mill, former Sunshine Biscuits, block 53.02, lot eight, block 54.01, lots 1.01, 1.02, and seven, and block 12, lot one. Thank you.
And Ms. Sawant, you have also prepared a PowerPoint-
Correct.
-that you may be referring to through the course of this presentation.
That is correct.
Which consists of nine pages that we're going to mark as P1 because this is a separate hearing with today's date. Feel free to refer to that during the presentation. And as Beth stated, if you just want to start by just identifying the properties-
Yes.
-for this particular study, identify the study.
Yes. So under the statutory powers instituted, instituted by the state of New Jersey and by the Borough Council Resolution, which was adopted on September 23rd, 2024, the council has requested the planning board to conduct an area investigation study for five parcels, that is block 53.02, lot eight, block 54.01, lots 1.01, 1.02, and seven, and block 14, lot one. Just to give you a little background, this study area, which comprises of five lots, is directly abuts the Hercules redevelopment area. This study is actually an addendum to the Hercules redevelopment area, which was approved by the council in 2015, I believe. And that study area comprised of 20 parcels. Together, it covered almost 590 acres of land, and that land was primarily for industrial use. However, over a period of time, these industrial uses started to disintegrate, and it was time to write a new redevelopment plan so that newer and cleaner uses can come in, have lesser impervious coverage with more open space preserved and a good network of roadway system. When the master plan was amended last year, there was a recommendation that there are parcels in close vicinity of the Hercules redevelopment study area that have remained weakened or are underutilized and should be evaluated for its redevelopment status. And that is exactly what we are doing tonight. These five parcels are reviewed against the local redevelopment housing law to see if the, any, any of them or all of them qualify for redevelopment. So first site, block 14, lot one, it is located in the special economic district. It measures roughly 48 acres. The address is 4,000 Bodentown Avenue and is fondly known as the former Sunshine Biscuit site. It's currently owned by Gen 3 Holdings, Inc. Block 53.02, lot eight, which is located on Journey Mill Road, it's only .3 acres, is actually owned by Hercules, but was omitted from the original study. Block 54.01, lot 1.01, is in the prime zone. It is a 10.5 acre parcel, which is owned by DEP. Block 54.01, lot 1.02, again in the prime zone, it's only .12 acres and is owned by Middlesex County Utility Authority. And the last lot, block 54.01, lot seven- And the last lot, block fifty-four point oh one, lot seven, which is in the prime zone, is owned by Raritan Railroad River. Now, I think the importance of this study area is is quite dear to me, especially because uh there has been a lot of redevelopment efforts on the other side of the municipal boundary. There have been similar redevelopment plans written. There's a lot of roadway infrastructure improvement that is proposed in the neighboring town. This property li- lies right at the boundary, municipal boundary of Old Bridge and Seville. And I think that is a great location, especially with the railroad uh running parallel or right next to the area. It is prime for development. And uh from what I have seen or I've seen the records, that planning board actually approved a site plan for this uh the Sunshine Biscuit site a few years ago to add another two fif- two hundred and fifty thousand square feet of a warehouse building. The current building on the site is already uh approximately a million. So which means the site would contain almost one point two million square feet of warehousing. There is a lot of improvements that are being planned by Middlesex County at the corner or the intersection of Journey Mill Road and Bodentown Road. I've been working with Justin and I've been working with Middlesex County on the some of those improvements because I'm on the other side of the boundary as well. So there will be roadway improvements. There's a railroad right there. And I think it's time for us to come up with a plan that can take advantage of the infrastructure that is around, see how we can even reduce the traffic by using the assets that are within the uh area. There are four parcels that are completely weakened. The Middlesex County Utility Authority lot has some meters on it, but it doesn't have a building or a structure on it. There is a DEP-owned parcel. It has some constraints. Maybe it's a good idea to preserve it for open space. But only the area designation will allow us to come up with a plan. Excuse me. I'm fighting allergies, I'm sorry.
That's fine, media.
So again, like I said previously, the study area is consistent with the master planning efforts. There was recommendation to look at the area surrounding the Hercules redevelopment area to see any if any of these parcels qualify. The Sunshine Biscuit site, the entire area is roughly sixty acres, but the Sunshine Biscuit site alone contains forty-eight acres. Thank you so much. I did go through the various, thank you so much. I did go through the various departments, including engineering, which I gave you a brief about the improvements that are occurring at the intersection. Uh I did speak to the police. And apparently, on the Sunshine Biscuit site, there have been four hundred reports uh of theft, trespassing, minor accidents. So there have been incidents and I have walked through this site. I've been to every corner. The issue with the Sunshine Biscuit site is there are so many tenants and different type of uses that don't really work together. The parking is not delineated the way it should be. The loading areas are not delineated. So it is a very dangerous situation in that area. In terms of ownership, block fourteen, lot one, is owned by Gen Three Holdings. Block fifty-three point oh two, lot eight, is owned by Hercules. Block fifty-four point oh one, lot 1.01, is owned by uh DEP. 1.02 is owned by Middlesex County Utility Authorities. And block fifty-four point oh one, lot seven, is owned by Raritan Railroad. The area is located within the smart growth study area. The area is located within the metropolitan planning area. The four parcels that are weakened are actually located in the park and natural areas, which could be preserved for open space. Now, applying the criterias of redevelopment law, I'll just go through each site. First site, block fourteen, lot one, the former Sunshine Biscuit site. The building was built in the early fifties. Although there has been some upgrades that have been done to the building, it is still not up to the standards. I have walked inside the building. There are leaks, there are areas where water keeps seeping and they keep collecting water in uh containers. And uh there have been some fire incidents there. Internally, there have been some accidents while uh transferring uh goods from one part of the warehouse to other. There are multiple tenants in the building that may that qualifies it for criteria E. The overcrowding, the faulty layout, the obsolete layout, the impervious excessive impervious coverage qualifies for criteria D. Because it is in the smart growth planning area, it qualifies for criteria H. It also qualifies for section three because it's such a huge area. It has to be included for sound planning of that entire area. Then we have um site two, which is block fifty-three point oh two, lot eight. This is the DEP-owned parcel that fronts on Journey Mill Road. It is weakened for the longest time. It meets criteria C as well as crit- uh section three and should be included in the redevelopment study area. It's currently zoned as um the prime zone, but it has not been able to attract any development, probably because of the constraints that are there and may be preserved for open space. Site three, block fifty fifty-four point oh one, lot 1.01, again has been weakened and also meets criteria C and section three. Site four, block fifty-four point oh one, lot 1.02. This is the property that is owned by Middlesex County Utility Authority. It has a meter chamber on site, but it is a landlocked parcel which has an access easement through the neighboring parcel. And it has been weakened, so it meets criteria C and section three. The last site, which is block fifty-four point oh one, lot seven, is the lot which is owned by the Railroad Authority. It is heavily wooded. It does not have access, direct access from Journey Mill Road. Again, has remained weakened and qualifies for criteria C and section three. In my opinion, all five uh parcels meet at least one of the redevelopment criteria and I highly recommend that the planning board pass a resolution recommending the council to designate these five parcels to be included in the Hercules redevelopment area.
Make a motion to open to the public. Second. All in favor?
Right.
Any opposed, the eyes have it. Anybody from the public like to speak? Come on up. Well, that's okay. That's that's all right. Just state state your name and your address.
Okay, just raise your right hand. Sow me swear affirm testimony of tonight's truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, sir.
State your name and address, please.
Tim Nowicki at uh 29 Carter Place.
Thank you, Mr. Nowicki.
Um, look, I I just stopped by the meeting here. Um I see a lot of stuff going on in town. Fifty-five-year resident of the town here. Um and I just wonder, you know, I I don't see Seville preserving anything. You know, I see us expanding. I see our carbon footprint getting huge. I don't see any reforestation. I see things like uh place like Bailey's Park. You know, it's it's endured through the decades for years. Um I spent a lot of time there today. I watched a uh probably a fifty-year-old turtle, you know, walk from the lake, about twenty yards to go lay its eggs, you know? And I I just don't see us preserving anything. You know, I I hear redeveloping this and I mean, I see a couple of trees planted here and there, but I see warehouses going up. There's nobody in them. You know, you tear that, we tore down a lot of woods along Cheesequake Road. Nobody's moved in there. You know, I can tell you that I talked to the people in Green Valley. You know, they have a lot of wildlife, animals in their backyard, bugs they've never seen, which came from those woods themselves because they were knocked down. You know, so I'm not here to change anything. I just stopped by meetings to say, you know, I mean, we can preserve, you know, as well as expand. I I you know, there's a lot to be said. I mean, you guys, what's it called, Riverton down there? You know, there's a lot of areas and a lot of places that you can do what you're expanding and take the open space away from.
Well, the park that you mentioned, I believe that the town's dumping a ton of money into that park. Bailey's Park?
Well, yeah, and that's one of my points. I mean, why not preserve something like that? You know, then then go ahead and and build up.
That isn't a that that isn't a function of the planning board. That would be a function to the council. You know, I mean, we can take your comment into things, but people, you know, what we're trying to do here is 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 make that red um redevelopment area more useful. Some of the some of the things that you talked about, one of the parcels was to leave it in a natural state. So um but when somebody owns it, they have a right when it's zoned to do that.
I'm not here to change anything, you know? Um you guys, all of your jobs to do, you know, I just, I'm somebody who's been here fifty-five years and I I've seen it, you know, just get built up to-
Old neighbor, I lived on Lily Street.
And I I just would like people to take into account, you know, that, you know, New Jersey's supposed to be about clean energy and clean this, but you know, your your carbon footprint's huge. You're just keep building out and building out until there's nothing left to build, you know?
Oh, unfortunately.
Again, I understand, I can appreciate your jobs and where you're coming from. You know, I'm just a lifelong resident. Just throwing my two cents in here, let you guys know that, you know, we're watching from afar as the town goes, you know, to nothing.
Well, we're trying. Thank you very much for your input.
Gotcha.
Thank you. Anybody under, anybody else like to speak under this? Anybody else like to speak? If not, we'll take a motion to close the public portion. Second, all in favor? Any opposed, the eyes have it. Thank you.
So again, just like the last redevelopment study, uh you're being asked uh just to make a recommendation to the council whether you believe that the various properties, size five, one or more of the criteria under uh the redevelopment housing law, uh sufficient to declare these properties a need of redevelopment.
Take a motion?
Big motion stated.
Second. All in favor or we all call?
Mr. Candell?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Velosin?
Yeah.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Tai?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you both.
Thank you very much for a clean application.
Next on the agenda, old business, new business administrative matters. Our next meeting is June 4th.
And it will be?
Here.
Okay.
Yep.
And we currently don't have any uh applications um that will be heard, but we will be voting on our previous application, the Mazajif Sadar. Yep.
Okay, we just need a motion to open to the public.
Motion to open the public. Second. Anybody from the public like to speak? Anybody from the public like to speak? Hearing nobody, I'll take a motion to close the public.
Motion closed.
Second, all in favor?
Hi. And a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
All right. See everybody on the 4th.